Good evening and welcome. We appreciate your presence at tonight's city council meeting as we discuss matters that impact our community. Your participation is invaluable. For the record, today is October 2nd, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I'll begin with the roll call, so council, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton.
Here.
Councilmember Stroop is not present. Councilmember Roden.
Here.
Olvera.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
And Swarick is not present. With five members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That sounded good. As a reminder to everybody here tonight, we do live broadcast this meeting, and I'd like to welcome everybody that's attending tonight's meeting and also those that are joining us by live broadcast. For those that are here in the room with me, if you do get an opportunity to speak as part of the meeting, I ask that all comments be made from the microphone up here at the podium. And the reason for that is the individuals that are listening by live broadcast cannot hear the comments that they're being made from the seats where you're sitting at right now. And when you do get an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that you introduce yourself, and if you're a resident, whether you're a resident of Fair Oaks Ranch or not, and if not a resident, and you're here just to speak as part of the meeting, what agency that you're from to come here as part of the meeting. But thank everyone for attending, and with that, we'll move on to our citizens to be heard. And we have four individuals that signed up as part of citizens to be heard, and first, Mrs. Libertor.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Deb Libertor. I live at 8160 Rolling Acres Trail. My comments this evening are regarding the proposed change in speed limit on Rolling Acres from 35 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. As you know, I wrote to the city in regard to this matter, and I thank Carol Van Zant for promptly acknowledging receipt of my letter and forwarding it to city council and others. I really appreciate those actions. I also appreciate Mayor Maxton reaching out to better understand my concerns and my perspective. I do not support the reduction of speed from 35 to 30 miles an hour on Rolling Acres Trail. I know the road condition has issues. There's crumbling edges, the need to resurface some portions, sharp curves coming from west of Ammon Road, et cetera. My perception is that some drivers may not know where the middle of the road is, and so they drift into the opposing lane. I do not see how a reduction of 5 miles an hour would mitigate any of these concerns. It has been offered that such a reduction would make the speed limit more consistent with Meadow Creek and Keeneland. However, the speed limit on Rolling Acres is already consistent with adjacent streets such as Post Oak Trail and Wild Oak Hill. I asked the council and the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee and others to ensure that you know exactly what the safety, traffic safety problem is, then carefully consider whether the proposed solution fixes it, and then also ask yourself, how will you know that it does? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Miller.
Hi, my name is Doug Miller. My wife, Amy, and I have been 20-year residents of, in Fair Oaks, on Rolling Acres Trail, and we are the initiators of the request to lower the speed limit on Rolling Acres to 30 miles an hour from Ammon Road to Silver Spur. We urge you today to take action and approve the first reading of the ordinance to reduce the maximum of speed on Rolling Acres to 30 miles an hour. Feel it's important that we bifurcate this issue for clarity of focus. First, there are excess speed issues in the back 40, and that'll remain an enforcement issue regardless of what the speed limit is. We're always happy to see our local officers patrolling and enforcing our speed limits, especially in the early morning and late afternoon hours, and we welcome an additional enforcement effort that can be resourced to help slow down that top 10% of drivers who use excess speed through our residential area. This request to lower the speed from 35 to 30 will improve the safety of our residential area by providing additional time for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists to react to oncoming traffic and changing conditions along the road. As indicated in the traffic study, the cut-through portion of Rolling Acres between Meadow Creek and Ammon is subject to over 1,600 vehicles per day, and it has the complicating hazardous conditions of morning and evening sunlight visibility limitations, narrowing road conditions, a blind hill, a sharp curve, pedestrians, and cyclists, all of which support lowering the speed limit to improve the safety in the section. The lower speed limit of 30 would also provide the same residential safety margin enjoyed by those residents of Keeneland and Meadow Creek Trail. Makes no sense for a vehicle traveling along Meadow Creek at 30 miles an hour can actually accelerate to 35 once it reaches Rolling Acres Trail when the road conditions and associated driving hazards actually get worse. The current condition at 35 miles an hour make it more hazardous for kids walking to and from the school bus, for residents walking and doing routine tasks such as getting the mail or putting out trash bins. Most of the residents in my area have experienced near misses and property damage from vehicles on Rolling Acres. Personally, we live on a straight section of the road, yet our mailbox has been destroyed and rebuilt three times, and our garbage bins have been knocked down like bowling pins on two occasions, and my neighbors have experienced similar incidents of property damage. There are inconsistencies between the city's designation for Rolling Acres as a connector street on the city's transportation map and the definition and the size and capability of a connector street found on pages 170, 171, 173 of the UDC. As per Table 9.1 of the UDC, a connector street will have a minimum of 24 feet of pavement width. Rolling Acres is actually less than 20 feet wide and is more closely aligned with the minimum 22-foot width that defines a local rural residential road. In front of my house, the pavement width is as narrow as 18 feet 4 inches, and it's less than 19 feet in several areas, which results in vehicles veering two wheels off of the pavement to avoid passing vehicles coming in the other direction. Lower speed limit increases the driver safety margin and reaction time available to adjust oncoming traffic through this narrow road. Lower speeds are also required for the poor road conditions between Meadow Creek and Post Oak. Since Rolling Acres provides access to the rural residential area of the back 40, makes common sense to me that it should be designated as a rural residential street with a corresponding residential speed limit, just like Keeneland, Meadow Creek, and portions of Detail Corn and Fair Oaks Parkway. Even though the street is long, it still serves 98 residential, single-family homes of the back 40. We're looking at the potential time impacts of reducing the speed limit from 35 to 30 miles an hour on the extended trip of traveling from Ammon Road all the way to the turn at Skartine. It actually only increases the travel time of 51 seconds to get along that section, yet most people don't even drive that length of road on the road. I don't think 51 seconds, in my opinion, is a significant inconvenience to improve the safety of the road. Furthermore, who doesn't have 51 seconds in their day to improve the safety of the residents along that road? After recommendations from the Transportation Safety Advisory Council, I distributed 98 survey forms to the Rolling Acres Trail residents to solicit residential feedback. The final survey results changed slightly from those included in your meeting package as I received six additional survey results after the published deadline for this meeting. Three of the additional survey respondents were in support of lowering the speed limit, and three of the additional survey respondents were opposed to that change. So in total, we received a total of 29 responses with a total of 62% in support of reducing the speed limit from 35 miles an hour to 30. So in conclusion, I urge you to move and approve the first reading of the ordinance to reduce the Rolling Acres speed limit from 35 to 30 to improve the public safety of our area with a residential speed limit for our rural residential residents of the back 40. I've got more statistics I'm happy to share during the discussion portion of the meeting, maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And Mr. Cleeman?
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I would like to tell a story in support of reducing the speed limits on Rolling Acre Trail. And it turns out in October 2021, I tried to give this speech, but I wasn't able to get it, so this time I wrote it down, and a little bit more time has passed. It still gets me emotional. There's, so, but anyway, I'll read and try to get the story through. That topic of the city council was on road safety. My daughter actually gave a speech, and Mayor, you may remember it, you were pretty impressed. She's a senior now and getting ready to go off to college. She's trying to pick some colleges, but unfortunately, not much has been done since then, so, but in August 2020, I was walking my dog down Rolling Acres Trail eastbound. We go down to the horse trails, you know, but we do walk to get there. I was on the left side to, just so I can see cars coming at me. A lady actually came up on a golf cart. I'd seen her a couple times. She was on the other side of the road, heading in the same direction. It was her and her dog. We exchanged some pleasantries. We talked a little bit, stayed on our sides, and, you know, just didn't really say much, but just, and then, you know, talk, you know, talk of weather, whatever, and then we got going again. She had just started her golf cart. I had just started walking when I heard a car coming up, and I could tell that it was going excessive speed. As I looked around, I could see, and I just, all I had time was to do was just wince, and it just came within inches of me, and I don't think they actually saw me until I was abreast of them, or they were abreast of me. And they then jerked the car across to get away from me, which then cut her off, and she thankfully was able to pull her car, or her golf cart, off into the road, off the road, and that car never stopped, almost hit two people, just kept going. I know that a lower speed limit wouldn't stop that person from continuing the drive, but it would, a lower speed limit would provide more time to see the different things that are going on on the road. Turns out that, unfortunately, that lady died in October of 2020 in a car accident. I believe it was October 2020. It was just two months after I had met her. Very sad situation. I don't know if the speed limit was involved with that or not, but the, but always going slower, pretty sure it's a proven fact that going slower allows people to see more and react faster. Yeah. The police do a great job of patrolling. They do, they park out in front of our house a lot just for speeding, and they do a good job of enforcing the speed limits that are there, but they cannot be everywhere at all My daughter and the neighbors, I think there's at least a dozen houses with school-grade kids that ride buses along Rolling Acres. As the time changes, they actually get picked up in the dark. There are no lights along Rolling Acres, but they have, all I do is plead for them. Well, in elementary school, we wouldn't let them do it. We just brought them in. We were like, this is ridiculous, it's too dangerous, so we drove them. Now that they're in middle school, I just tell them to stay up against the fence until the bus comes, but they are on the same road that, as Doug talked about, that people are off that road, busting mailboxes, breaking down fences, running people off the road, pedestrians in their golf carts. So I'm asking you, please do something, reduce the speed limit.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments, and thank you all for being here tonight. We have one other speaker tonight, Ms. Nunez, and I believe she has a presentation that she'd like to make as part of Citizens to Be Heard.
Very short, I promise.
First, I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Amanda. I was waiting at the city hall at 5:30, and I was there for like half an hour, and she's like, oh, you're in the wrong place. So I'm glad she shepherded me over here. My name is Anna Nunez, and I am a public affairs specialist for the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. Thank you for allowing me to share information about the presidential major disaster declaration for Texas severe storms that occurred from July 2nd through the 18th, 2025. The city of Fair Oaks is in a very unique position, so I appreciate the opportunity to share. SBA disaster loans are available to help businesses, nonprofits, homeowners, renters, and faith-based organizations recover from declared disasters. These long-term, low-interest rates loans help survivors rebuild, get back to business, and make property improvements that eliminate future damage or save lives. Homeowners and renters can also use the loans to replace personal property, and you do not have to own a small business to apply for an SBA disaster loan. So the city of Fair Oaks is located in three counties, Bayer, Kamal, and Kendall Counties. So I crossed, referenced, I'm about to share information on two separate disaster declarations. The first, the counties, residents that live within Bayer and Kamal County only qualify for economic injury disaster loans, and that is for up to $2 million to help small businesses, nonprofits, faith-based organizations to meet working capital loans. You couldn't make your payroll, you couldn't pay your mortgage, any kind of capital needs. The physical damage deadline, I'm sorry, the economic injury disaster loan deadline is not until April 6th of next year, 2026. However, Governor Abbott requested another declaration for certain counties that didn't get the full benefits, like Kerr County, and that's where Kendall County falls into place. So residents who live within Kendall County jurisdiction, they qualify, and that is the one that was this way, the green one, they're both green, but the one that was flat, that received a 60-day extension, right? And then there is a new one, and that is Texas Declaration 21292. And all residents who live within Kendall County, they are qualified for physical damage loans. So businesses, home disaster loans for up to $500,000 to cover damage to primary residences, and $100,000 for homeowners and renters to repair or replace disaster-damaged property like vehicles, property, clothing, et cetera. And then they also qualify for the economic injury disaster loans. So I will follow up in writing. I will send this information to you electronically. I know it's a lot of information, but what we would respectfully request is your support in helping share this information with your constituents, reminding them that for the newest disaster declaration, if they had physical damage, Kendall County residents, for homeowners and renters, small businesses, that deadline is November the 27th. And for, I'm sorry, for Kendall County, it's November 14th, and for the economic injury disaster loans, let me get that, that's April the 6th. So folks can easily call us at 1-800-659-2955, or go on our website at sba.gov/disaster. We have SBA customer service representatives that will hold your hand, help folks make an application. Even if it gets denied, we'll help you cross that, dot that I and cross your T and bring you back and help you. So we ask for you, your support to help share this information on your website, through your newsletters, and on social media. I will also send you some social media graphics and all the information that I just shared, and thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. That completes all of the individuals that we had that signed up as part of Citizens to Be Heard. Is there anybody that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? Okay. With that, we'll move on to our consent items for tonight, and we do have two consent items on the agenda. First is the approval of the September 15th, 2025 Special City Council Meeting Minutes, and second, approval of the September 18th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Is there any council member that would like to remove either of these meetings from consent to consideration? I get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ruben in a second.
Second.
Scott. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to our public hearing tonight, and the city council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, will conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony on proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code. And Christina, I have the time now, is 6:52, and I'm opening the public hearing, and I'm turning it over to Jessica for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Maxton, city council members, and attendees. My name is Jessica Rellucio, city planner for the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. This is a public hearing to receive public testimony on proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code. The item begins on page 12 of your agenda package, and the presentation is on page 24. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide all the information for the UDC amendments. In doing so, the format of the presentation mirrors the latest workshop that summarizes the concern, council direction, and proposed amendments. Tonight, I will highlight the proposed amendments. As a brief introduction, what is the purpose of the amending UDC? The purpose of the amendments is to incorporate state statutes, clarify existing standards, and update standards to reflect the current needs of the city. The process over the past year included several workshops with the city council and Planning and Zoning Commission. The final workshops concluded on August 14th for PNZ and September 4th for city council. Then, in alignment with the UDC, a public hearing by PNZ was on September 11th, and this is city council's public hearing. As part of the process, the public hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the city website on August 24th in alignment with the UDC. Once more, for the public hearing, all the information is being provided and mirrors the latest workshop. I'll be reviewing the proposed amendments for each part. First, for the amendments related to screening, the proposed amendments enhanced all landscape screening to opaque for consistency. For amendments related to conservation development alternative, the proposed amendments removed non-technical standards of blended averages and enhanced removed non-technical standards of blended averages and enhanced requirements for maximum gross density and minimum lot size, clarified the total net lot area and minimum requirements. These amendments all provided additional clarity. For amendments related to subdivision street frontage, the proposed amendments incorporated minimum street frontage of 100 feet for lots on a cul-de-sac or knuckle sac. This would allow for four lots, creating a typical cul-de-sac. For amendments related to block lengths in subdivision design, the proposed amendments enhanced the maximum block length to 1,200 feet maximum block lengths in order to avoid unnecessary infrastructure and additional intersections. For amendments related to plat waivers in-site development applications, the proposed amendments defined plat waiver and variance. These amendments clarified the process for each. For amendments related to uses in Table 4.2, the proposed amendments incorporated land uses, ungrouped uses based on greater or lesser intensity, such as duplexes and multi-units, condensed and enhanced parking standards for each use into one table. For amendments related to conditional uses, the proposed amendments included associating conditional uses, such as recreational maintenance facility, to require reviewing the design and placement of associated buildings and storage. For amendments related to trees, the proposed amendments ensured regulations regarding tree circumference regulations are clear and concise. Ensured private individual lots can be redeveloped without tree preservation restrictions. And from the last workshop, staff is working with the city attorney to determine legal approaches to retroactively mitigate trees from a previous owner that the new owner must mitigate. For amendments related to signs, the proposed amendments reorganized condensed and simplified sections, incorporated statutory updates, added a variance process, clarified sign size, number, and location. From the last workshop, staff reviewed definitions of prohibited signs. For amendments related to drainage and erosion control standards, the proposed amendments removed conflicting language to clarify the section further. Finally, next, on October 16, City Council will take final action on the UDC amendments. Thank you, and that concludes the public hearing.
Thank you, Jessica. We didn't have any residents or anybody here tonight to sign up to speak as part of the public hearing. Is there anybody that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak about this? Okay. Christine, I have the time now, is 6:59, and I'm closing the public hearing, and turning it over to council for any comments or questions. Anybody? Go ahead.
Can you give a little bit more detail on the portion where you said for the tree and habitat protection, it'll ensure private individual lots can be redeveloped without tree preservation restrictions? Can you give like an example of that?
From the last workshop, that comment, yeah. So that's just in reference to council member, a few council members in the last meeting had requested for staff to look into that as a possibility.
And so that made its way into the UDC?
No, no, it has not. We are looking, we are still looking into it, doing research with the city attorney's office, but no changes have been made in relation to that, to this UDC.
Thank you.
Everybody else good? I do have a quick comment. So, long time coming. This has been a four-plus-year process of updating the UDC. And some thank yous do need to go out to our Planning and Zoning Commission. It's been a lot of time in their efforts over the last four years reviewing this document. To our city staff for all the efforts that they put into the updates as part of this. And then also to council for your input and your considerations. As we went through this, you know, we became a home real charter city that allowed us to develop a comprehensive plan and a unified development code. And at the time, one was put together, and a lot of the comments in it were to highlight the hill country aesthetics. That's really what everybody focused on that we wanted to keep. And so the question really became, what's the definition of hill country aesthetics? And I'm not sure there is a good definition. But what I believe has come from this is a UDC that defines Fair Oaks Ranch aesthetics. And it's what we believe is important, we as a community, all residents, what we see, what brought us here, the character of our city, has all been put into the Unified Development Code to ensure that future developments that come in here are in line with the character of the city that we have today. And so a lot of thanks goes into, you can only imagine a four-year process of updating a 250-page document that is pretty straightforward, but provides the guidelines now that we can protect the future of our city. And thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Mayor Maxton.
And with that, I guess we'll move on to the consideration item. And so we do have a consideration and possible action upon approving the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Unified Development Code regarding comprehensive amendments, including various policy and administrative changes. And Jessica, anything else to add to your previous?
No additional information, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions from anyone here tonight? Everybody good? With that thing, can I get a motion? Of course. I didn't see you behind the podium.
No, sorry. Councilmember Alvera, could you please rephrase her question? Were you asking about the preservation of trees on private property the way it's written in the UDC, or were you referring to the other question that we're still working on?
I was wondering, because we had that discussion about that issue of the tree mitigation on private property, if it's like redeveloped.
Correct.
And my question was, was that change made in this version, or is it still being researched, about the legality of it?
Okay, let me double-check with our experts, because I want to make sure we provide you the correct answer.
So in the current Unified Development Code, as it's written, redevelopment is stated in this section as redevelopment is adding additional footprint, or building footprint. And so that could be construed as redevelopment of private property, such as an addition onto a home, an existing home. And I believe that has been taken out of the revisions as presented today.
So it's only if the building footprint is going to get bigger now, just like somebody sells their home and then somebody comes in and can just clear cut? Does that make sense?
I'm going to refer to the manager of engineering.
Okay. Liam Neese, Manager of Engineering Services, do you mind repeating that real quick so that I make sure that I understand it correctly?
I guess I'll ask it this way, what change was made specifically with respect to the tree preservation on private property?
So the changes in the original code specifically states that anything considered redevelopment, whether it's commercial or residential, would require, would require all the requirements within that section of the tree mitigation section of the UDC. So what we did was, we didn't want to restrict residents if they wanted to expand or put like a patio deck. I believe we had those conversations, and we showed some examples on some of our presentations of, we gave examples of what would qualify as that redevelopment. So if they wanted to add to their house, then according to the code as it was written at that time, they would have to then have to mitigate those trees based on that addition. So what we did was, we took out the residential part and maintained the commercial part. So now it is, that section of the code only applies towards commercial redevelopments, not necessarily residential.
Got it.
All right. Yes, sir.
Answer your question.
It does. Does that include to include, I know we're talking about patios and additions to the home. What about if we're moving a fence? Because that was, that was an issue.
No, I don't believe that is considered a redevelopment as far as the addition. They have examples in there that actually says, like, this is, not examples, but like, what would qualify as one, but fence is not one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Good? Is there any other questions from anyone? Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Unified Development Code regarding comprehensive amendments, including various policy and administrative changes, and providing for an effective date? So moved. From Scott in a second.
Second.
From Keith. Any other discussion items from council? With the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to our second consideration item tonight, which is what I think a lot of people are here for, is the consideration and possible action approving the first reading of an ordinance amending the Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 12.01, general provisions, Section 12.01.003, by reducing the maximum speed limit on Roland Acres Trail from Ammon Road to Silver Spur to 30 miles per hour. And Carol, turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and attendees. Carol Van Zan, Assistant City Manager. For your consideration tonight is a recommendation from the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee to reduce the speed limit on Roland Acres to 30 miles per hour from 35. The agenda item is found on page 340 of tonight's packet, with the presentation starting on page 355. On March 31, the city received a traffic safety submittal where the resident expressed the following concerns with the speed limit on Roland Acres Trail. As Mr. Miller noted in his presentation, the narrow and curvy road is used as a cut-through from Ammon Road to Ralph Air Road. It is a high vehicle volume, especially from Ammon Road and Meadow Creek Trail. Residential risk with routine tasks such as retrieving mail, placing garbage bins out, or merely just walking. There is inconsistent posted speed limits. On the lower half of Roland Acres, there is a 30 mile per hour speed limit sign that was not removed upon adoption of the 35 mile per hour ordinance in 2001. Mr. Miller noted that lowering the speed limit would provide greater time for homeowners to identify oncoming traffic, allowing them to take appropriate evasive actions. It would also provide a level of traffic safety consistent with speed limits on Meadow Creek Trail and Keeneland and other city streets. At the May 7 T-SAC meeting, staff provided the following information to the members. Roland Acres is designated as a connector street, which is meant to collect moderate traffic from larger areas or from multiple local streets. We have no high-vehicle-volume complaints on file at City Hall. From January 24 through April 1, 2025, 12 speed warnings and citations were issued. Between October and December 2024, two reported vehicle accidents were made. One involved a deer, and one involved a mailbox. During our presentation at T-SAC, we did recognize the curves on Roland Acres, so staff suggested installing two applicable cautionary curve-ahead signs. T-SAC, after a discussion and presentations of attendees in the meeting, unanimously voted to recommend reducing Roland Acres from Ammon to Silver Spur to 30 miles per hour. Their basis was based on the inconsistent posted speed limits causing confusion. The road is narrow, sightline issues, sunlight problems, mailboxes being hit, and high pedestrian cyclist traffic. They also requested staff to add the suggested cautionary curve-ahead signs and encourage Mr. Miller to perform a citizen poll before presentation to the City Council tonight. So for tonight, we have additional information that we hope will assist you in your consideration of this request. Reducing the speed limit to 30 miles per hour can be a City Council action upon determination the current speed limit is unreasonable or is unsafe. At the T-SAC meter, meeting, Mr. Miller and one other area resident spoke in favor of the request. Staff has since posted the cautionary curve-ahead signs. Some updated post-T-SAC meeting data, between April 2 and August 30, two speeding warning and citations have been issued. In May, one vehicle accident involving a deer occurred. From June 5 through September 17, the submitter had distributed a survey to 98 residents. As Mr. Miller noted today, he has some updated figures that he relayed to you, but at the time of posting, the respondent results of 98 residents showed 15 were in support, while eight were opposed, 65% to 35%. Additionally, radar feedback devices from August 20 through September 7 were placed out on Roland Acres. There were three different sections that we placed the radar signs. Later in the presentation, I'm going to refer to top, mid, and lower sections of Roland Acres when we get to the graphs. So when I refer to the top section, it would be Meadow Creek Trail to Ammon Road. And in a few minutes, I'll show you a map. Wild Oak Hill and Flagstone Hill would be considered the midsection, while Wembley and Sunland are considered the lower sections of Roland Acre Trails. The radar counts captured the average daily vehicle counts, total average speeds, daily average speeds with a max recorded speed, and the 85th percentile of speed. The data shows more vehicles travel at the top section of Roland Acres Trail. Total average speed is below 35 miles per hour at all sections. The 85th percentile of speed is below 35 miles per hour at all sections. This is the graph. The top section is the two radar signs on the right. This is coming off of Ammon Road down into Roland Acres. The section in the middle is the two radar signs, and then the lower half is the ones on the left. So now, these next few slides will be the data graphs. As you can see from here, the average daily vehicle count, and again, the top, the mid, and the lower. So for the top section, that is southbound, that is going from Ammon Road down to Silver Spur. You roughly have 844, 113, and 65 in the lower section. Going northbound, which is Silver Spur to Ammon Road, you're looking at approximately 806, while you have 144 mid and about 105 in the lower section. This graph captures the total average speed, again, by sections, southbound and northbound. So the southbound section and the northbound are below 35 miles per hour on all three sections. These next few graphs is just a line graph. It gives you a better visualization that we are going roughly a little bit below 35 miles per hour during the time period of August 20 and September 7. Again, this captures both southbound and northbound, and it's the top section on this one. This slide will show you the midsection. Below 35, again, the same time period depicting south and north in the mid. The lower section drops drastically down to roughly below 25 or in that area. Again, this area is more populated with homes and it doesn't Again, this area is more populated with homes and it does have a few curves. So, an industry standard guide that is used to help determine a safe speed is the 85th percentile speed. This is the speed at below which 85% of the drivers travel on a road segment. This graph depicts the 85th percentile speed. We're back to the bar graph with the top, mid, lower, southbound, and northbound traffic are below 35 miles per hour. In closing, staff has provided three potential options in considering the request to reduce the speed limit. You may accept the TSAC recommendation and approve the ordinance that is provided in tonight's packet, reducing the speed limit to 35 on Roland Acres from Ammon Road to Silver Spur Trail. Option number two is provide staff with an alternate recommendation, such as various speed limits. And option number three is you remain status quo and Roland Acres, Roland Acres Trail will remain 35 miles per hour and properly posted speed limit signs will be performed. And with us tonight is Mr. Miller. If you have additional questions of him, I'm sure he'll be happy to address them or provide you with updated data if you would like to have it. Thank you.
Or anybody that's here tonight.
Or anybody, yes.
Thanks, Carol.
Yep.
Good rundown.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I've got a couple, Mayor.
Okay.
Hey, Carol, just in looking at the, the speed graph, the average speed, obviously averages can be a little misleading. Do we know how many, so the 844, like, let's just use the top graph, 844 and 806 on the average. How many of those were over the speed limit by how many miles an hour? Like, do we have the median information on that so that we know where the midpoint was? Because we got this average 60, I mean, we got a max of 65. I mean, somebody had to be going 20 to bring the average down.
Unfortunately, I do not have the median statistics.
So we don't know, and so the citations, according to this, in 15 months, we've issued 12 speed violations, I guess, over the 35 from January 24 to April. And then, again, in your more updated one, we have two violations. So it looks like about one speed violation per month or less over the 35 mile an hour. Is that accurate?
It could also be over the 30 mile per hour because that is posted on the lower section. So it could be that as well.
It could be that. And these accidents here, we don't have any accidents involving vehicles at this point. It's just a vehicle against a deer and one against a mailbox. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have any vehicle accidents related to speeding. Okay. Do we have regular patrols over there to check speeding?
Yes, we do. I can have Chief, if you need detailed information, I can ask him. But I, yes, I believe regularly, two, three times a day, they are posted out there. Yes.
So we have good, we have good visibility right now with, with drivers checking speed. Okay. And only issuing 12 violations in a 15-month period. Okay, well, I just wanted, I just want, first, I wanted to clarify that. I'll pass it to Ruben for his questions, but I may have another one or two. Go ahead, Ruben.
Could you pull up the Exhibit B, road speed limits in the City of Fair Oaks Ranch diagram?
It's in the, it's not in my presentation. It's in the packet, it's in the packet. Page, I'm sorry.
345.
345.
So Meadow Creek is 30, correct? And then, so if we, if we lower Roland Acres, that would be black on this diagram, leaving Silver Spur Trail 35, Post Oak Trail 35. And then just overall, it kind of, when you look at this map, it puts things in perspective because really, the only streets that are 35 are Fair Oaks coming off I-10, Dietzel Corn towards I-10, and then Roland Acres, Post Oak, and Silver Spur. And so I'm not against lowering the speed limit of Roland Acres, but I think that if we do that, we need to look at maintaining some consistency on the other roads in that area. Because if, if Roland Acres is now, if that were to be 30, I could see people like, well, let's just go through Post Oak because that's 35 instead of taking it all the way around. And so we might be feeding people more onto Post Oak because that's going to be a higher speed limit. And so it wouldn't make sense to me to lower Roland Acres Trail and then have adjacent streets be 35 when really nothing else in the city is 35 except for, you know, Fair Oaks Parkway and Dietzel Corn.
Yes, we can look into that.
Sir.
Doug, thanks for your man's job, staff. As, as always, great job on getting all the data and realizing we're talking about a five-mile speed difference here. So that our numbers are always going to be skewed. You know, if you're going 32 or 33 and a half, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty close. But I do know from living back there that not everything gets reported. I mean, there are just slews, you know, over the, over the year of dead mailboxes where people just shrug their shoulders and fix the mailbox, and it never gets reported. I also know that anything that we can do to slow and make people more aware, like was discussed, to give more reaction time on a road that, I think everybody's pretty much in agreement that that's one of the worst roads in the city. It's, it's not consistent, it's got, it's dark, it's got bad sections of hills. We're also in the back 40, so we have a large number, and not talking about school kids, which are obviously a huge issue, of bikers and walkers. I see it every day back there. I think that the, not everybody coming from school, I don't want to blame it all on teenagers. I mean, it's easy to do, but it's not. But with the Amazon guys screaming down the road, the guys from Costco making their deliveries as well, I think consistency is a big thing. And that, in my mind, I'm, I'm lowering it to 30. Just as a, as a general, as a general rule, as a way to caution this so that, I also know we have a great police force. The guys are out there working it all the time, but also know that they don't cite everybody. Okay? Right, Chief? I mean, so, so our data is based upon the data that's available, best data available, you know? And I don't think the five miles an hour is really that, 51 seconds, if that's really what it is, is really that big a deal. That's kind of where I'm coming from. And having to, to watch this every day, it is, it is a problem. That's why we'd put boulders at the corner of Ammon and, and Roland Acres. That's why that, that poor guy fixed his fence, I don't know how many times on that corner, right? I mean, because of people, and, and the roads are going to change. I get it, we're going to have development in that area. But until they do, I, I would suggest that we consider going forward with this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I.
Go ahead.
Concur with the thinking of the consistency of 30 mile an hour versus the 35 and how it fits in with the city and the traffic flow with the city since most of, a lot of ours are 30. And I'm more of a proponent to lower it to 30.
Okay. Thanks, Dale. Keith, you have any following questions or?
I, I do support the idea, however, you know, the data doesn't support it. The data shows people are obeying the speed limit. The number of tickets and citations do not seem excessive because 844 per day in over 15 months, 12 tickets. But I think the lot, so, so the data to me doesn't support lowering the speed limit. However, I think to Ruben's point, the consistency, and I also bike there all the time. I'm going by Meadow Creek Trail, Post Oak. So I too have seen, you know, speeders, but I would like to say that I do support the 30 mile an hour speed limit. But also, we need to probably maybe increase our presence a little more and, and get anybody that's speeding out there to be a little more safe because it is a little narrow road. But just, just to qualify my, my comments, I just, I do like the concept of consistency for the whole thing.
Anybody else? I support lowering the speed limit also. And we had a discussion and great points that you brought up. If we're looking at lowering the speed limit, it should be based on safety considerations. And number one, the TSAC reviewed this. The Transportation Safety Advisory Committee reviewed this and made the recommendation to council. And I believe it was a unanimous vote by them to forward this to council to lower the speed limit. So we're looking at safety considerations, a lot of the items have been talked about tonight. Some of the things that I've looked at, it's a narrow road. And Mr. Miller, you brought it up. I've been using, it's a 20-foot wide woad, 20-foot wide road. You even said it was even narrower in portions. And I believe 11-foot wide road is about the standard width of a road when built for safety reasons that we would see. Also, as we see it right now, in that, whatever it is, 18 to 20 feet, that Roland Acres is at right now in width, a lot of the shoulder or the edge of that road, there is no shoulder, the edge of that road is crumbling. And so that presents to me a safety hazard also. And then when you combine all this with night driving, and what we like about the north 40 is it's very dark. And so when you drive through there at night, it presents another hazard with a narrow road crumbling sides and width of the road. And so for those, I think there are some safety considerations that need to be considered. And so what are the impacts that we've seen? And we've talked about tonight, you know, we do see speeders. God, 65 miles an hour on that road, that's incredible. But the impacts that we really see are mailboxes being hit, deer being hit, and then occasionally on trash day, the trash cans get knocked over just because they're all so close to the road. And so I'm looking at this and as I analyze it, you know, it's 35 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. It's not a significant reduction. But any reduction, I think, will provide additional safety measures that would provide a safer environment on those roads. I agree with the part that Scott mentioned. We do have this road up for reconstruction, and at that time, the width of the road will be changed. It's not going to be extremely wide, but it'll be wider than it is today. And maybe at that time, it's a good time to look at it and, and really do, you know, is it a connector street? Or is it a residential street? And what should the speed limit be? But I like what Ruben brought up as far as consistency, and I really hadn't considered that. Our prima facie speed limit is 30 miles an hour for the city. That's the standard speed limit. And for consistency, it's really north of Keeneland. Keeneland and all the roads north, it's probably even more than that, are all 30 miles an hour except for Silver Spur and, and Post Oak Trail. And so I think that's probably something that we should look at in the future. And, you know, I think it would make it a lot easier for people. I've driven on Post Oak Trail and wondered, is it 30 or 35? If everything was 30, I think it would just make it easier. But tonight, when I look at this, I really look at this from a safety perspective. And can we create a safer environment? Yes, I believe we can by lowering the speed limit to 30 miles an hour. And that's just my perspective.
I, I would ask that, sensing what may happen here, that, that might leave Silver Spur Trail and Post Oak Trail as 35. And when you look at just the map and the overview of the city itself, to me, that, that doesn't make sense.
Correct.
And so, and I'm just throwing that out there. So unless there's some huge opposition, particularly for the folks that live there, I could see where now you're promoting people to take Post Oak Trail because they can travel faster. And so I think that maintain consistency for that whole section. It's all rural, you know, it's dark, so the same reasons that would apply to Roland Acres would apply to those other streets. So I would like to have that looked at.
Okay.
Relatively soon as well.
Anybody else? Good, Keith? Dale, Scott? Any questions or comments from anybody here tonight? All right. I'll just start off with the first motion, and we'll see where it goes. A motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 12.01, General Provisions, Section 12.01.003-3, by reducing the maximum speed limit on Roland Acres Trail from Ammon Road to Silver Spur Trail to 30 miles per hour. And can I get a motion for this?
So moved.
From Keith, in a second.
Second.
Any additional comments from council? Then with the motion on the table, all in favor of approval of the reduction in the speed limit, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. This is the first reading of the ordinance. And with all ordinances within the city, when we approve them, we have to do a second reading before it's effective. And so this will be on the agenda for our next council meeting for the second reading. All right. Thank you all very much. Y'all going to stay around for the whole meeting now? Probably not.
Coward.
We have two workshops on the agenda for tonight. And the first is a tree mitigation options related to our wastewater treatment plant Phase 1 expansion and the Plant 5 Ground Storage Tank projects. And Kelsey?
Yes.
How are you tonight?
I'm good. How are y'all?
Good.
Good evening, council. My name is Kelsey Delgado. I'm the project manager for the City of Fair Oaks Ranch. And tonight, we will be discussing tree mitigation options for two city projects. The first being the wastewater treatment plant Phase 1 expansion. And then the second one is Plant 5 Ground, the Plant 5 Ground Storage Tank Project. Starting off, I wanted to provide a brief review of each of these projects that we, that we will be discussing tonight, starting out with the wastewater treatment plant. This project aims to address the immediate needs of our aging infrastructure. Improvements include effluent pump station and bottom-of-the-hill lift station upgrades, headworks odor control mitigation, and pipeline conveyance improvements from the wastewater treatment plant along Sybalo Creek within an existing sewer easement to the ponds on the Golf Course property. Final design has been received and is currently under review. Construction is expected to begin in the new calendar year. For this project, three heritage trees are marked to be removed, as well as nine protected trees. One heritage tree is located on Golf Course property. The other nine protected trees and two heritage trees are along the existing sewer easement along Sybalo Creek. Moving on to Plant 5 Ground Storage Tank, this involves constructing a new 500,000-gallon tank at Plant 5 to improve operations and resiliency during times of high demand. This project is, the design for this project is currently under TCEQ review with an expected construction date beginning in December. For this, for the construction of this new 500,000-gallon tank, four protected trees are marked to be removed. Moving on to recap what the current Unified Development Code states regarding tree removal, this falls under Chapter 8.8 Tree and Landscape Protection, which states under Section 8.82B that trees located within utility easements are exempt from preservation requirements. However, in a later section, Section 8.87, that's regarding removal by right. It states that protected and heritage trees located within 10 feet of and on- It states that protected and heritage trees located within ten feet of an onsite sewer, sanitary sewer facility, within ten feet of the perimeter of a proposed building footprint, an area, an area necessary for site access, or within areas designated for construct, for the construction or installation of public facilities such as streets or utilities are maybe, excuse me, may be removed at the sole discretion of the applicant provided that Section Eight Point Eight Seven B through C are satisfied. That section details mitigation requirements, which I have summarized on the next slide. So regarding mitigation, this section, or these sections state that the city manager or designee may approve the removal of protected trees. City council has the final authority over the removal of heritage trees. Mitigation shall be at a one-to-one ratio for trunk circumference inches removed, and mitigation may be met by paying a fee in lieu of mitigation. The current fee schedule for a fee in lieu, fee in lieu is presented here on this slide where it states that a heritage tree, for the removal of a heritage tree, the fee is two hundred dollars per trunk circumference inch, and protected trees is one hundred dollars per trunk circumference inch removed. So what does that look like in terms of mitigation for these projects? As mentioned, for the wastewater treatment plant, twelve trees are marked to be removed. The tree located at the top, it's number twelve thirty-two, right there, that tree is the heritage tree that is located on the Golf Course property. So to meet mitigation, to mitigate all twelve trees, that fee in lieu would be a hundred and two thousand dollars, or it would involve replanting ninety-four trees onsite or on a public site elsewhere. If the Golf Course tree was mitigated by us providing the, by, by providing the Golf Course with trees, that mitigation fee in lieu would be lower to just over eighty-four thousand dollars, or it would be, or it would be eighty-three additional trees that would have to be planted onsite or on another public site. For Plant Five, four protected trees are marked to be removed. The fee in lieu would be twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, or it would entail twenty-six trees to be replanted onsite at the Plant Five, at Plant Five or on another public site. Combined these two projects, the fee in lieu would be a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, including the Golf Course tree if we were to pay the fee in lieu to mitigate, or a hundred and six thousand if we were to provide the Golf Course with those trees. Replanting, or we may replant, replanting sites would be a hundred and twenty trees or a hundred and nine if we gave the Golf Course eleven trees to replant for the mitigating of that one tree. Any questions so far? Just going over numbers? Okay. So when considering mitigation, there's a few key points that we want to consider. First, the wastewater treatment plant and Plant Five Ground Storage Tank projects are both necessary to address our infrastructure and our needs for the future. Replanting trees within an existing easement or at Plant Five is not possible due to the interfere, interfere, the possible interference of future maintenance or potential damage to underground sewer lines. As we all are aware, the city is very limited in public space, especially when looking to replant a hundred, upwards of a hundred and twenty trees. The Golf Course has expressed interest in receiving some trees to be mitigated for the tree that we would ultimately be removing from their property. And ultimately, the city's goal is to be good stewards of our natural resources and to be fiscally responsible. So getting into the various options for mitigation, staff has prepared three for council to consider. The first being to pay a fee in lieu. This would be the most costly option, as mentioned, the mitigation cost would be anywhere, or would be a hundred and six up to a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. The funds for the mitigation would come from the project budget and be, and would go into the tree mitigation fund. If you recall, the tree mitigation fund can be used for specific purposes, those being the oak wilt program, tree and landscape protection, city-approved events such as the Arbor Day celebration, or specific programs and events as approved by city council. For reference, I have provided the construction budget and estimated cost of construction for both projects. The wastewater treatment plant Phase One has a construction budget of four million four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And as, in opinion of probable construction cost, came in with the seventy-five percent design plans for the wastewater treatment plant, which was four million four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This included a fifteen percent contingency of five hundred and ninety dollar, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Final design will have an updated OPCC while, after it's been reviewed. For the Plant Five Ground Storage Tank Project, the construction budget is one million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the contracted amount for construction is one million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Option two is to host a free tree giveaway. Mitigation trees would be given to our residents on a, on a first-come, first-served basis. Trees that would be available would be of easy-to-carry sizes, similar to what other tree giveaways provide, three or fifteen gallon, three gallons or fifteen gallons. Free, this giveaway would be part of the city's Arbor Day Celebration, which would be hosted on November seventh. That is Texas's Arbor Day. The financial burden would be significantly less than option one. The cost of purchasing the trees for the giveaway is roughly five thousand dollars. Since these trees, since the trees available to be given away would be smaller than a two-and-a-half inch diameter, this option would meet the mitigation for the number of trees necessary to replant, but not meet the exact mitigation based off of a one-to-one trunk circumference ratio. The last option is to, is exemption. These are both city projects, and therefore, city council does have the authority to exempt us from mitigation. By doing so, there would be no financial impact to either project and no burden to mitigate. By selecting this option, city, the city would not follow the UDC and mitigation, or no mitigation would occur for this, these trees marked to be removed. Moving on, staff's recommendation is to host a free tree giveaway. This would include providing eleven trees to the Golf Course for the mitigation of the one tree removed on their property, and a hundred and nine trees would be available for our residents. Not only does this option align with Arbor Day Celebration and Tree City USA recognition requirements, it is also low cost and would not have a significant impact to either project budget. Though this does not fully meet mitigation requirements, staff believes it is a fair compromise for the community service it provides. Should council be interested in this option to meet mitigation, staff may suggest a similar strategy for other city projects in the future. Next steps, so pending council's discussion here tonight, staff plans to bring back the selected mitigation option to, directly to city council as a resolution at, for consideration at the October sixteenth city council meeting. With that, I will go ahead and open the floor to any discussion, or if y'all have any questions for us here tonight.
How many trees would five thousand dollars get?
So it would be a hundred and twenty trees of both sides, so it would be a mix of three gallons and then fifteen gallons. The five thousand does include the eleven trees that would be given to the Golf Course to mitigate the tree that is being removed on their property. So a hundred and nine trees would be available for our residents through this giveaway.
And I'm assuming they would have to provide proof of residency in the city to receive one?
That would be correct. Similar to how we used to do the Household Hazardous Waste Event, there was, I believe they checked IDs or addresses or a utility bill to confirm that they are ranch residents.
Are, are there spots on the parkway itself that could use some new trees?
There is room on the parkway. We do have a separate line item in the tree mitigation fund dedicated for tree and landscape protection.
Okay. And I'm, I'm, it seems like, and the, the fee in lieu, that's not budgeted into the...
That is correct.
Okay, so it'd be, we tack a hundred grand plus on?
Onto both, onto the project budget.
Which seems like we'd be punishing ourselves and/or the taxpayers with an increased project budget.
That is correct.
Okay.
I, I'm kind of going with the same thought process you have. You know, we're, we're beating ourselves up. I always liked the idea of providing trees to the citizens, and it's, there's nothing nefarious in cutting down these particular trees because we're mitigating ongoing projects that, that they need to come down. But I think that the idea of doing the tree giveaway keeps in, in the idea of Tree City USA in mind and everything else that we love about Fair Oaks Ranch, opera d'or oaks. So that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Kelsey, do you think we'd be able to deploy all hundred and twenty trees? Do you think we'd be able to get them all planted somewhere?
If we did a tree giveaway, or if we were to plant them on public property?
In either, either case?
For public property, we would not have the space. It would be very difficult. On top of that, the man-hours it would take to plant them all, but also ensure that they grow by watering, fertilizing, planting, that are, those are all considerations, are points to take in, to consideration when looking at that option.
And maybe the contrarian, probably the only one on council's gonna bring this idea up, but one of the things, if we're gonna be Tree City, is protecting our trees, and I know our oak wilt fund has done a lot, and we've had a lot of participation by residents to mitigate oak wilt in the, in the city. So I kind of believe it would be good to increase that fund and let's, let's use some of our unallocated surplus to build that fund up to encourage more oak wilt prevention in the city, because we might plant a hundred and twenty-two trees, but we might lose a lot more due to oak wilt not being mitigated. I'm not one for increasing expenses, of course, you know, that's not been my style. But we do have, we have money in an unallocated surplus position that we could allocate to this and would not impact our taxes, would not impact the residents at all, but also would actually benefit the residents so they could go ahead and try to do some more mitigation on oak wilt. So I think we should think about that. I like the idea of either planting the trees or providing some funds in, in lieu of that to mitigate and protect the trees we have, because we've got some pretty large trees. It's gonna take a long time for a two-inch tree to grow the size of eleven or twelve-inch, you know, diameter tree. It'd be many years. Probably most of us on council may not be here by then. So that's a thought I've had when I looked at this, is to consider that option.
Can we cut down trees to do that? We could just add money to the oak wilt fund. But I think in this case, we don't want to, you know, we're, we're, my, my thought process is that we're, we're cutting down trees, we're not beating ourselves up, you know, that, this way. It seems to me that this is a, one of those scenarios where, where, we're mitigating a construction project by the city for the citizens of the city. If we want to put money in the oak wilt fund, we can do that anyway. But this way, we were able to get the trees out to other places in the city, and perhaps some people who wouldn't plant a tree might actually come out and get a tree and plant one.
Well, maybe a suggestion be we do the tree giveaway, and then the balance of that, put in the oak wilt fund. To me, it's just an opportunity to put money in the oak wilt fund, because we're kind of at this point of considering that, and we do have the money.
If there is a concern about whether they could, we could deploy a hundred and twenty trees, why not lower that amount, but then also contribute to the oak wilt fund? So you're doing a little bit of both?
I agree with that. I think that's a good solution.
But as a, when you're saying that, we're saying that as a separate issue. So that would be a different budget allocation. We're not saying we're gonna pay for the tree mitigation. Because what, what, what I hear partly is, what was the amount, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
So it's a hundred and six thousand if we provided the Golf Course with trees to mitigate the tree removing on their property, or a hundred and twenty-three thousand if we included that within our mitigation. I did want to clarify, though, we may not have public space to plant those trees. I do believe we will have the response from the public and the, and engagement from the public to give away all a hundred and nine trees. I think it would, I, I think staff is in agreement, it will likely be a very popular event with high demand.
Just to clarify, Keith, I was trying to understand, I, I fully support, you know, whatever we put in, forty-five, forty thousand we put in this year for oak wilt grants?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five. But we also have the tree mitigation fund that still has other funds left in it that we could move over into oak wilt.
That is correct. So the tree mitigation fund is a reserve, is a reserve for specific purposes and uses. Developers, if they are unable to mitigate by replanting, they pay into that. And so I, I don't have the exact number on what's left in the tree mitigation fund after we've allocated for this new fiscal year, but there is still money left in that budget. And in the future, when developers come in to develop, there, they do have the option to pay in, so there's opportunity in the future to continue gathering funds that could go back to the oak wilt program.
And so what I was trying to get at is, so, one of the options was, is that we could pay the fee in lieu of a hundred and twenty thousand, and that would go into the oak wilt, well, it'd go into the tree mitigation fund, which some of that could be used for oak wilt. Or we could do the five thousand towards the, the trees, tree giveaway, and then we can always come back and increase the amount from the tree mitigation fund into the oak wilt fund within our city budget.
Guess what I'm trying to clear, well, what we're saying here with options one, two, and three, that we are gonna either live by the UDC, or we're gonna exempt ourselves from it. That's what option one and two says, we will comply with the UDC by either planning in lieu of or paying in lieu of. Option three is that we're gonna say the city's exempt, right? So, so if, if we go with option one or two, my contention is, I'd rather put more money into our tree mitigation fund to protect the trees we have. And if we wanted to split that up and add, you know, like, like Scott Parker said, we could also, you know, provide trees and put money into the tree mitigation fund by using the funds that are calculated here or some version of that. Because what we're really saying is that, is the city going to comply with our own UDC? That's what option one and two is referring to. So I'm not really separating that from another budget item, I'm just saying if we're gonna consider paying in lieu, where does this fee go if we pay in lieu? It would go into the tree mitigation fund, correct?
The fee in lieu, lieu would go into the tree mitigation fund to be reserved for specific purposes. One of those could be the oak wilt program pending council's...
Right.
...a, a budget amendment.
Right. I was only focusing on oak wilt, but these other three are applicable too. So that's what I just wanted to clarify, if we're gonna pay into the fund, you know, we have a choice here, three choices, right? We either pay into the fund, we put out trees, or we exempt ourselves.
Right.
So if we're looking at, other council members talking about doing two, I'm suggesting we consider one, and then now we've come up with one and two, right? Just a combination thereof. But it looks like we've, we need to decide if we're gonna even comply with our own UDC or if we're gonna exempt ourselves. So if we comply, then we have a couple of choices here. So I was a little bit different maybe than where you thought I was heading from, maybe.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Basically, in these options, you're in favor of option one.
I like it, because it helps preserve our trees. We're Tree City. I love planting new trees, but a two-inch tree's gonna take a long, long time to...
I would say...
Produce itself.
Because there is money now in the tree mitigation fund, so there is money there that could be moved for future oak wilt treatment.
I'd like it to be more. Maybe that's what I'm saying. I'd like to increase the tree mitigation fund.
Okay.
Because we do have a significant problem with oak wilt. I mean, I see it a lot in, in our city.
Yeah, I have no...
Yeah, we all know that.
Can we achieve that result without raising the project cost by whatever amount? In other words, allocate it from unspent funds instead of taking it and raising the project amount by whatever you want to allocate to the tree mitigation?
How much do we have? Do we know? Does anybody know? Does anybody know?
In the tree mitigation fund?
Correct.
I'm looking at the, the, the budget presentation from September. And the, the end of the year project, the end of the year projection is a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Of that, we are appropriating forty-two eight fifty into the current year's budget that started yesterday. So it's forty-three, almost forty-three thousand dollars appropriated. That will leave about ninety-nine thousand dollars in balance still available in the current tree mitigation fund.
How much did we reimburse residents? Do y'all recall from the oak wilt activities?
So the first year we did it was fiscal year, the end of fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four. It was from July into October, until end of September. We allocated the entire budget, which was ten thousand. Last fiscal year for, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, we allocated the entire budget that we, that we had put out, which was fifteen thousand. This year, it is, we upped the budget to twenty-five thousand.
All those years, are there people who apply and they can't get a reimbursement because the funds are depleted?
Yes. So last fiscal year, I believe we ran out in February.
I'm in favor of raising it, too.
Yeah, that's my point. I think we need to really increase, well, that, that we'll have to talk about separately. That, but I think if we could increase the resources into the tree mitigation fund by some amount, later we can talk about how do we allocate it. But again, yes, does it increase the project cost? Yes. But we also have two and a half million of unallocated surplus. And I don't think that's a significant impact. That's just my opinion and, you know, whatever the council will decide to do.
I think what, if I understand Ruben correctly, I mean, we could go with the five thousand, buy the trees, do the tree giveaway, that pertains to this project. If we wanted to come back at a later time, we could reallocate funds and put it into the tree mitigation fund. Doesn't have to be a hundred and twenty thousand.
That's fair.
I, I hate to set a precedent. We're doing a city project for the citizens and we're looking to penalize ourselves. I mean, we can mitigate that by doing something that's relatively cost-effective. We can add to the tree mitigation fund at any time. Add a surplus. We don't have to do it with this and add to the cost of the construction.
Yeah, I also wanted to bring that to your attention, that this would, by increase, by taking it out of the project budget, that would be charging it to the utilities, not the surplus. It would come out of the project.
That would be a problem.
That it would come out of the project budget, so not the surplus.
Well, why don't we do that? But I do, I mean, we are setting a precedent in some respects here, right? Because we're saying the UDC applies to the city. We are setting a precedent. It's just that the options, there are just two options or three options here. So I think the precedent's being set. Where does the city sit with regard to the UDC for itself? That's really the precedent we're setting. And so we're saying we're going to comply by either tree mitigation or we're going to comply by pay and a fee. I think everybody agrees we should not exempt ourselves, or I guess we'll find out.
Correct.
So we are setting a precedent. But I'm okay with that. I'm okay with moving forward with the providing trees. But it does bring up the topic, I'd like to see us increase the tree mitigation fund at a later time, in a later budget discussion, because I think we've got a lot of demand for that. And that just came up because of this topic.
I have one more point to make, sorry. For transparency, I know you mentioned two-inch trees. I just wanted to clarify, a tree, free tree giveaway does not give away two-inch trees. It would be three-gallon or fifteen-gallon trees. To put it in perspective, a thirty-gallon tree is a, depending on the species of it, is anywhere from a one and a half inch to two-inch tree. And so these trees would be smaller, closer to an inch or so. There's many reasons for that, for, for choosing smaller trees. Most importantly is, I mean, trying to travel around with a thirty-gallon tree is going to be very difficult, especially to plant for most residents. Most giveaways do smaller trees because it's easier to take care of, easier to plant, and they are a little more cost-effective. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, thanks for correcting that for me. I just, I will be much older now because of much smaller trees.
Is it a variety of species?
There will be a variety of species. The variety is depending on what the nursery has in stock at the time. A lot of cities or communities do giveaways, especially during Texas's Arbor Day. And so all of them will be native species, native Texas species. But we haven't, it's pending what's available at the nursery.
As long as the resident, proof of residency is strictly enforced.
Absolutely.
But the only concern I have with it is the free tree giveaway. And so sometimes free means that I don't put as much concern into taking care of it, planting it, and we really have no way to control that or manage that. The tree dug is, does get planted and that it does get taken care of.
There will be, like, educational information that would be provided with all of the trees, talking about tree care, proper ways to plant trees and everything.
That's good.
We will do our effort to try and ensure all these trees are planted and taken care of appropriately.
But I think the majority of residents, if they did pick up a tree, would probably do the right thing.
Usually if people are looking, seeking out free trees or trees in general, they are actively wanting to better their community and their property, yes.
Mayor, could we, or Kelsey, could we see how many trees the city could plant and then give away the balance? You know, on what public, where, where would we, you know, where are trees we might find useful for the city? And then to, to some of that, try to do as much as we could.
We could. I bring it back to the point I made about the man-hours and the labor to try and plant these trees, but also watering them. Our maintenance staff is al, is always very busy. And so that would be, for lack of a better word, a burden that they would have to go out and maintain and water these trees. A responsibility for them to water these trees, especially the first few months of their lives. And so that is something to consider is the man-hours.
You know, we have no vote on this, so really it's just a recommendation or a direction back to Kelsey on which one to go with. I think everybody's kind of leaning towards option two, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
We will bring that back to you at the next meeting for, for, for a formal vote with that recommendation.
All right. In any que, I didn't really have an opportunity to ask any questions from anyone here tonight, reference? Okay. Did you get everything you needed?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Trees and horses. And we have one more workshop item tonight, which is a proposed amendment to the city's financial management policy, fund balance reserves policy, and the debt management policy. And Summer?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Summer Fleming, Director of Finance. So my presentation begins on page four hundred and forty-three of the agenda packet. And tonight, I'll walk you through substantive updates to the city's financial management policy recommended by staff. And this policy serves as a framework for how we manage city finances. Now, our goal this evening is to review the changes, ensure council is aligned, and then bring back a resolution for formal adoption at the next meeting. Now, as a background, the city's investment policy was first adopted in nineteen ninety-five and is reviewed annually as required by the Public Funds Investment Act. Last September, council approved comprehensive updates. And that revised policy was issued a certificate of distinction from the Government Treasurer's Organization of Texas. So no further changes are recommended to that policy at this time. The financial management policy was first adopted in two thousand and eight and it was last amended in two thousand and twenty-one. And so regular review allows us to adapt to new laws, maintain consistency with our financial practices, and ensure we have strong internal controls. Now, the purpose of the financial policies is to provide guidance for council and staff in making financial decisions. It supports transparency and helps protect our credit rating, promotes stability and long-term thinking, and ensure compliance and the legal use of resources. So key changes include, we refined the language throughout for clarity, and we expanded several sections to provide more explanation and make the document more understandable. The policies are now better aligned with our current processes and practices. We've incorporated targeted updates to improve efficiency, oversight, and compliance with law. And importantly, we've added two comprehensive policies, a debt management policy and fund balance reserves policy as appendices. So I'll go through the significant changes in order of how they flow in the policy. And I'll pause between each slide, so I encourage you to stop me for further discussion or questions as we go along. And then if you want to follow along in the redlined version of the policy versus my slides, that starts on page three ninety-five of the packet. So in section one, purpose statement, we added objectives of the policy. Now there to guide council decisions, employ fair revenue practices, maintain financial capacity and sufficient reserves, promote sound financial management, protect the city's credit rating, and to ensure the legal use of financial resources. And listing the objectives is good because it creates clarity and accountability. In section two, on accounting, auditing, and financial reporting, we added section two B on encumbrance accounting and how it's applied by the city. And then section two G, we changed the name from internal auditing to internal controls monitoring to better reflect the city's in-house practices. We have implemented a program that systematically spot checks and monitors internal controls across the entire organization, but we don't perform formal audits. So this change clarifies the scope of our process and avoids confusion with external or independent audit functions. In that section, we also modified to assign the operational responsibility to the finance director from the city manager. Now, we added a subsection for internal financial reporting, two H. That requires quarterly financial reports to be provided to city council. So while the Public Funds Investment Act already requires quarterly investment reports, extending this requirement to financial reports ensures consistency and it formalizes a process that we already have. We added section two I for annual financial disclosure to formally document the required disclosures that we are already complying with. This simply puts in writing the legal requirements that we must follow regarding debt reporting to outside entities. And historically, we use our financial advisor, Samco Capital, to ensure these disclosures are completed accurately and on time. And then last update in this section is the addition of a section on compliance with council policy statements to make it clear that the financial management policies you adopt are intended to serve as guiding principles for how the city manages its finances. So while we recognize that unique or unforeseen circumstances may occasionally require an exception, those instances should be rare. And by documenting this process, we ensure that any exception is specifically identified, explained, and brought to both the city manager and council for review and acknowledgement. So this addition reinforces accountability and adherence to the policy set by council while still allowing flexibility when necessary.
Summer?
Yes.
Do you have an example of that that you just mentioned?
Where we might have an exception to the policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Not a specific example. I could think of possibly at a time of an emergency where we might have to, if the city manager had to possibly approve an expenditure over the threshold in an, in an emergency where we couldn't gain council approval. But again, that would be in emergency, it would be documented, and per the policy, it would have to come back to council. As far as other examples, I, I
Thank you. Thank you, I was just curious if that had come up historically.
No, but I think it just, it ensures that we would be able to if absolutely necessary. And if it were necessary, it would still be transparent and would have to come back to council to be reviewed and acknowledged. All right, moving to section four, operating budget. We've added a subsection called basis of budgeting. That just documents the basis used by the city. This aligns with accounting standards and best practices. And we added subsection H for adopted and amended budget, just to document the legal requirements for adopting and amending the budget. We added subsection I, budget administration. This clarifies expenditure compliance and defines the city manager's role in administering the adopted budget. And we added subsection J on long-term planning. So this recognizes the city's new practice of preparing and updating the five-year financial plan each year. And including it in this policy just reinforces the importance of long-term planning to connect annual budgets with broader financial goals. In section five, fund balance and reserve policies, we've streamlined this section to provide a high-level framework without duplicating detail that's in the newly created comprehensive policy that we included as appendix F. And so we'll discuss that policy in detail toward the end of the workshop after I've gone through all these proposed revisions. Section six, capital expenditures program, we added subsection, subsection F on the programmatic replacement of capital assets to document a practice that the city is following. Staff maintains a schedule for replacing vehicles, large equipment, some technology assets, and some building infrastructure based on the useful life cycles of the assets. Now, this schedule provides the annual savings amount for the program. And by including it in our financial management policy, we're formalizing a process that helps ensure that our assets are replaced in a timely and cost-effective manner. This is also documented in the reserve policy, so we can discuss it in a little bit more detail at that time. In section seven, revenue management, we added subsection M on the write-off of uncollectible receivables. It outlines how the city handles accounts that cannot reasonably be collected. So including this practice in the policy, it just ensures transparency and consistency. It documents that we follow state statute when applicable. And we only consider utility accounts for write-off after all reasonable collection efforts have been made. Now, in section eight, expenditure control, we added definitions for budget amendments and budget transfers in section A. And then in subsection B, we increased the city manager's purchasing authority to match the state's competitive bidding requirement, which was recently raised from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. That threshold had remained unchanged since two thousand and seven. So this update keeps us consistent with state law while still maintaining strong internal controls for purchases below that level. And again, these are purchases already approved by council in the adopted budget, so this simply streamlines the process. Did you have a question? In section nine, asset management, we added subsection E that references the city's surplus property policy. Now, council approved this policy in December, two thousand and twenty-two, and it's been part of our procurement procedures manual since that time. And by referencing, referencing it here, we just create consistency across the documents and reinforce transparency in how surplus property is defined and disposed of. In section ten, financial condition, we renamed subsection A from no operating deficits to simply operating deficits to provide flexibility while maintaining the principle of balanced operations. So this change recognizes that limited use of short-term tools may be necessary or preferred in special circumstances. Section eleven, debt management, we modified this section to provide a high-level framework while moving detailed standards and procedures into a comprehensive debt management policy that's included as appendix E. And so this approach aligns with best practices and it strengthens the city's credibility with rating agencies and external stakeholders. And so we'll take a deeper look at this policy also later in the workshop. In section thirteen, grant financial management, we broadened the policy beyond administration to include solicitation, evaluation, and acceptance of grants. This ensures alignment with council priorities. It promotes It promotes sustainable funding practices, and it strengthens transparency and compliance through city manager approval and council acceptance. And then we added section fourteen on donations to provide clear guidance on when and how the city may accept gifts from individuals or organizations. The purpose is to ensure that donations serve a valid public purpose, that they align with the city's goals, and that they comply with all laws and regulations. And for efficiency, the policy allows the city manager to accept smaller donations under a thousand dollars while larger donations would require council approval. So those are the significant changes in the financial management policy. We can go over any questions or discussion on that before we move to the debt management policy.
I don't have any questions.
Just comments, I know you mentioned the internal audit. When was the last time we had an external, internal audit review? Have we had one in the city before?
We've never had an independent internal controls audit done. We had a firm come out and help us put together a system of internal controls. They looked at our controls, listed gaps, helped us put some into place and develop a plan for how we could monitor them internally. In two thousand and twenty, we had gotten a quote for an internal controls audit, and that came back at eighty thousand dollars. And so at the time, it wasn't feasible to spend that much on an internal controls audit for an organization of our size. It's something that we can pursue and look into, the cost of what it would be to perform one of those, though.
That's pretty expensive. I think, you know, if we can, just investigate it at some point to see what that would entail. It's a good practice if it fits into, you know, financial.
All good?
Okay. So the debt management policy represents an important step in ensuring that all the city's borrowing decisions are made with consistency, transparency, and a focus on long-term stability. This draft policy starts on page four hundred and thirty-two of the agenda packet. And the purpose of the policy is to establish a clear framework for managing all city debt. It provides both council and staff with consistent standards for evaluating different financing options so that decisions are made in alignment with our long-term financial goals. The policy promotes disciplined financial management and responsible borrowing practices. Now, the guidelines within the policy apply to all city debt, regardless of the funding source. Debt financing will be limited to capital assets and infrastructure, not for operating expenses. Whenever possible, the city will favor pay-as-you-go financing when resources are available and when doing so will not compromise the availability of resources needed to sustain long-term operations. The policy establishes limits to ensure that debt remains affordable and within legal thresholds. Debt will be structured to minimize impacts on the property tax rate, avoid balloon payments, and maintain a minimum debt service coverage ratio for self-supported debt. This is most often applied to the utility. So these guidelines create a safeguard against overextending the city, and it helps preserve our financial flexibility in the future. Now, adopting this policy provides some clear benefits. First, it would help preserve the city's long-term financial stability. It can help protect and strengthen our bond ratings, which in turn reduces borrowing costs. It provides transparency and consistency in how debt decisions are made, reinforcing accountability to both the city council and our citizens. The policy encourages conservative revenue projections to ensure repayment. It supports opportunity for cost savings through refunding and cash defeesance. It formalizes regular reporting and policy review so that the city continues to adapt and improve over time. And SAMCO Capital, the city's financial advisors, they have reviewed this draft policy and are comfortable with it moving forward for adoption. So are there any questions on the debt management policy? I still have a whole nother policy to go through. So, the fund balance reserves policy, it starts on page four thirty-eight. And this one is designed to formalize how we classify, maintain, and strategically use our reserves so that the city remains financially resilient and well-prepared for the future. Now, the framework for fund balance reporting comes from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, specifically GASB statement number fifty-four. And this standard establishes the classifications for governmental funds. However, the rules don't apply to enterprise or utility funds. So for the city, examples of these classifications include prepaid expenses, that is a non-spendable fund balance. We have restricted balances like the different court funds, court security, court technology funds, and some public safety funds. We have assigned fund balances for the tree mitigation fund, the operating reserve. And then we have unassigned balances. Those are not tied to a specific purpose. And oftentimes, we further classify unassigned fund balance as allocated or unallocated for internal purposes. But these categories ensure that reserves are clearly identified, reported, and available for the right purposes. Now, this new policy establishes minimum and target reserve levels. It defines the purpose of each type of reserve, and it provides guidance on how to manage excess reserves. So reserves can serve many purposes, and we considered those in developing this policy. They act as a safeguard for emergencies or contingencies. They can help reduce the need for future debt issuance, provide one-time funding for capital projects and infrastructure. They can maintain capital replacement funds, support strategic initiatives, and even help stabilize the tax rate when needed. So this slide represents our current reserves in the governmental funds. So the city maintains a capital replacement fund, also referred to as the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. I mentioned this briefly. It's dedicated to the planned replacement of city assets like the vehicles, some heavy equipment, IT equipment, generators, HVACs. The program was established in two thousand and seventeen, and it follows a schedule that replaces assets at the end of their lifecycle. The goal is to have saved a hundred and ten percent of the asset's cost by the time it needs to be replaced. So now, in practice, this amount does not consistently align with the full replacement value due to market fluctuations, inflationary pressures, sometimes changes in equipment specifications. So council could consider increasing the reserve target to better match true replacement costs. But that change would require a one-time true-up and also higher annual contributions. Alternatively, maintaining the one hundred and ten percent goal continues to provide significant budgetary relief at the time of replacement. So even if it doesn't fully cover the asset's cost, it does significantly help the budget. We also have strategic and capital project fund reserves. Those come from unspent appropriations, often the result of project underruns or canceled projects. Because many of the projects span more than one year, the fund balance tied to each project stays with that project until completed. And then any remaining balances stay in that fund, and they become available for future projects, subject to council approval. And then we have the operating reserve, which current policy is to have reserves equal to at least six months of operating expenditures. So over the course of several workshops on the five-year financial plan, council did discuss the need for a more clearly defined reserve policy. In particular, there were questions about how much should be maintained in the operating reserve. Six months has sometimes been viewed as too high, but at the same time, it's been recognized as a comfortable and safe target. So to address both perspectives, the recommendation before you creates two separate reserves that together equal six months of operating expenditures. One is an emergency reserve equal to four months of operating expenditures. It has stricter usage requirements and is intended for emergencies. The other is a budget stabilization reserve equal to two months. It's less restrictive, could be used to address things like revenue shortfalls, minimize tax increases, it could help fund or start new programs. Both reserves include replenishment guidelines to ensure balances are restored in a timely manner. And so this structure provides still stability and flexibility, ensuring that we maintain a strong safeguard while also giving council the ability to respond to changing needs. Are there any questions or comments on this recommendation? This would be for the governmental funds.
All good?
So for the utility fund, current reserves include capital replacement fund, which operates the same as on the governmental side, but it only includes assets owned and maintained by the utility. There are two capital project funds, one for water, one for wastewater. These reserves also come from unspent project appropriations. Project funding can come from the capital reserve fee, bond proceeds, impact fees if applicable, and operating revenues. We have reserves for unspent impact fees, one for water, one for wastewater. The utility has a debt service reserve equal to one year of the annual debt payment. This is usually required in the bond covenants. And then we have the operating reserve. So the current policy sets the operating reserve goal of maintaining a one-year, a reserve equal to one year of operating expenses. Now, the GFOA recommends that enterprise funds or utility funds maintain a minimum reserve equal to forty-five days of operating expenses. But staff recommends a reserve equal to six months of operating expenses and managing it as an emergency reserve. So the six-month reserve would be lower than our current policy, but it's still very conservative. Unlike the general fund, the utility can respond more quickly to revenue shortfalls by adjusting its rates and fees. So that provides added flexibility and reduces the risk of long-term instability. Are there any questions on this recommendation?
Yeah, I do have just one clarification. So we have a one-year target right now. We're suggesting to match this six months like we have everything else.
Yes.
Okay. Like for the general fund, okay. That's it.
Well, that's all I have, so.
That's all?
That's it. But overall, this update strengthens the city's financial framework and provides greater transparency and accountability. And so the next steps is that we would prepare a resolution for council consideration at the next meeting to formally adopt the revised financial management policy and reaffirm the investment policy with no changes. But if there is anything you would like me, any changes to incorporate into this, that is what I would do to bring forward at the next meeting.
I do have one item.
Yes.
On page three ninety-eight, under planning, it says the budget process includes multiple phases, each of which requires a joint effort by governmental leaders and city staff. I just suggest we change governmental leaders to city council or council. Because I don't know who else leads the government, but council and staff.
Okay.
Just minor, it's a minor change.
Yes, I can incorporate that change.
Anybody else good?
I think that's it. The only other thing I think maybe, Summer, and I don't know if we need to put it in the policy, but any of the small donations that the city manager can accept on behalf of the city, that those get reported to the council, you know, within a reasonable timeframe of the donation and the amounts and who it came from.
Okay. And would you want that actually in this policy, or would it be more of our procedural?
It could be procedural, just one, I think it's just a point to be sure. We, if we get a handful of those kind of donations, we.
The council is, okay.
We don't need to approve them, we just need to be made aware.
Okay.
That's all. That's all.
Okay.
Anybody else? A great presentation, and I read through your document earlier today. And a lot of work was put into this to get you to the level you're at right now. So I'd like to thank you and your team for all the work that y'all have done and a very good presentation for what you did tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, I do want to recognize the team because it was Andrea, Keely, Julie, and Clayton. We ended up researching probably thirty to forty other cities and their policies. A lot of research went into it, so I do appreciate my team.
That completes the major items that we had on the agenda tonight. We can move on to announcements. Do any council members have any announcements that you'd like to put out tonight? Nope? National Night Out is October seventh, that's next Tuesday. And Ferris Ranch Police Department and E S D four Fire Department will be joining us as we move around the city, multiple locations throughout the city. Good opportunity to strengthen ties between those that keep us safe and our community, so thank you all. Tomorrow, October third, there'll be a temporary closure of one lane on Detail Corn. It'll be just east of the Detail Corn, Fair Oaks Parkway, Fair Oaks Parkway intersection. The closure is scheduled from nine AM to three PM. But two-way traffic will still be maintained, even though there'll only be one lane of traffic. They'll have flaggers out there stopping traffic and waving people through. You may want to avoid the area if you can. Trick or Treat, Ferris Ranch Police Department is sponsoring Trick or Treat on Saturday, October twenty-fifth. It'll be at six PM, it'll be at the parking lot of Ferris Ranch Elementary School. And then a quick announcement, the November fourth election is coming up. Bear County residents will be able to vote right here in this room. Early voting starts on October twentieth. And registration for this election must be done prior to, or deadline is October sixth, which I believe is Monday. You have to get your registration in. That's, only Bear County residents will be able to vote in here. For Kendall and Comel County residents, they will vote in their respective county locations. Scott, anything else I missed, or?
Nothing further.
Are there any items that council wants added to a future agenda?
Unless it's already in the works, can we look at bringing back the Nolayase speed issue?
Okay. And are you, when you say that, are you to relook?
Yeah, my memory is that it was a consent, it got pulled. It was recommended by T SAC that we lower the speed limit, and then it didn't pass. But then there was an amendment that it go back to T SAC. I think it did go back to T SAC, but it wasn't good advance to us. I don't know procedurally how that works.
It did go back to T SAC and it was not recommended.
Yeah, so I'd like to talk about how, just that whole, it was recommended, now it's not. And then just, I'd like to have us take a look at it and maybe take a vote.
Give a recap.
Okay. Anybody else? We had two items that really came up as part of the meeting. I can't remember what they were. But I'll, they weren't specific, but we'll go back and take a look at those. All right. We will be going into executive session tonight pursuant to section five-five-one point one zero-one of the Open Meetings Act, Test Government Code, Accord, and GOG Body. We hereby convene into closed session under section five-five-one point zero-seven-four to perform the annual evaluation of the city manager. Christine, I have the time now, is eight thirty-four. And we are moving into executive session. For the executive session, start on the, all the council members. And I don't know, you give us fifteen minutes and we'll call city manager in. And I don't believe we need anybody else for it. I anticipate forty-five minutes to an hour for the executive session and possibly a consideration item as we come out of it. And for council, I got about, if you want to take a five, five-minute break? Okay. And so at eight forty, we'll get started back into executive session. And so at 8:40, we'll get started back into executive session.
You hear me okay? All right. Christine, I have the time now is 9:46 and we are reconvening back in open session. During our timeframe in executive session, we had one item that needed to be brought back into open session for consideration. And I'd like to make the motion to modify the city manager's employment contract by changing his yearly salary to $206,500 a year. Can I get a second?
Second.
Scott. And any further discussion from council? If the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is approved. Christine, anything else that we missed or anything we need to cover?
No, sir.
And Scott, from your standpoint, anything else we need?
No, sir.
Good meeting. Appreciate all's participation, comments, contribution. Thanks again to the city staff for all that they did as part of their presentations. I have the time now is 9:48 and we are adjourned.